7:14, we'll call reading order. Mr. Bosworth, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Records show Mr. Miller and Mr. Villan are absent. Other board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given?
It has. We are working off of the revised agenda, which includes the financial resolution and the general fund balance designation and some student handbook revisions as part of the revised agenda.
Time to public comment. Per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comments must be a resident of the regional school district, a parent or a little guardian of an enrolled district student, or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotted of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the word. Speaker is not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person subject to their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Steele?
No.
Thank you. Two reports. District administrator's report.
Okay. Three things for the board and our public here this evening. First off, Happy New Year is coming up here. Our new school year 2526 officially starts on July 1st, so that is a big day for our school district as we're wrapping up our fiscal year and that's also the end of our of our school year officially on June 30th. So Happy New Year to the to the board, a couple days in advance. Secondly, on July 11th, remember we have a board vacancy for Area 1 East. That represents the townships of Henrietta, Orion, Rockbridge, Richland, Univista, and Willow Townships. And the deadline to apply for that is at noon on Friday, July 11th, noon on July 11th. And you can turn information into the district office if anyone out there is interested. And if they're looking for more information, they're welcome to contact myself with Laura Steele and we'd be happy to help. And then finally, just, we had a couple of adjustments at our last board meeting. Remember that our committee meetings and board meetings are flip-flopped, so we will be having our committee meetings on Monday, July 14th. Buildings and property and personnel will both start at 6 o'clock, policy and curriculum to follow. And then on Wednesday, July 16th, we will have our board meeting, our regularly scheduled board meeting that was changed. That's all I have for this evening. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Board member reports.
Our buildings and property, that Wednesday, June 11th. Reorganized the committee. On our calendar, we looked at the prior year, got an update on the referendum projects and where we are on that. More will come on that as we get more finalized details. On the concession stand down here at the football field, just working with insurance, trying to get that moving forward. And then we have a memorandum of understanding with Richland County on campus, and that's on tonight's agenda. And then we looked at the New Year's schedule, and that was it.
All right, thank you. On to the minutes then. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of June 9th, 2025, as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxel. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Sharp. Discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. On to financial items. Approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I move to approve the statement of cash dated June 16th, 2025, and approve community first general checking accounts. for the net total of $412,271.56. This is for the purpose of general operating costs for the district.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sharp. Is there a second? I'll second it. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to point out or add?
Nothing to add on this statement.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. On to the resolution appointing the Associated Trust Company, National Association, to serve as fiscal agent in connection with the general obligation corporate process purpose bonds, Series 2016A, dated August 10th, 2016, and removing bond trust services corporation appointing Associated Trust Company, National Association, to serve as fiscal agent in connection with taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A, dated January 30th, 2020.
Okay, this agenda item is from Horace and Brady in an attempt to consolidate our paying agents for our loans, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Bosworth to give some more details on that.
Yeah, thank you. So we will now have four debts that we're making payments on. The $15 million and the $12 million from our most recent referendum, and the two debts that were mentioned in the resolution that's on red. Currently, we have associated, associated, bond trust, and no paying agents. We have four debts and three different methods of making those payments. So what we're proposing is that we use Associated Trust Company to pay for all four of them. And it would just be a cleaner process for us, and it also sets the district up for the next 15, 20 years to be using the same fiscal agent, which is just better for whoever's in the district office at the time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bosworth?
Is there a motion then to approve the resolution appointing Associated Trust Company, National Association, to serve as fiscal agent in connection with the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2016A, dated August 10th, 2016, and removing Bond Trust Services Corporation, and appointing Associated Trust Company, National Association, to serve as fiscal agent in connection with the taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A, dated January 30th, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdna. Discussion? Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Steele, consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent items. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at $560 from the Grandview Family Worship. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at approximately $700 from Wisconsin Motorsports. Motion to accept the donation of $2,500 to purchase supplies for Partners Deck from the Richland County Campus Foundation. Motion to accept the donation of seven light boxes valued at approximately $200 from the Richland Hospital. Motion to approve the coordinator assignments for the 2526 school year as presented. Motion to approve the curriculum instructional coaching assignments for the 2526 school year as presented. Motion to approve the payment requests in the amount of $2,680 to Dr. Dale Sennett and $900 to Kate Taylor for the accompaniment of our choirs and solo ensemble events during the 2425 school year. Motion to approve the 2526 employee handbook revisions as presented, effective July 1st, Motion to accept the recommendation from the Personnel Negotiation and Budget Development Committee, and approve the 2526 substitute rates as presented. And a motion to approve the MOU with Richland County as presented. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Sharp. Mr. Board, anything you'd like to add or call out?
Yeah, I would just call out, Mr. Dowdna, had mentioned that at the committee meeting, the MOU with Richland County was presented. This is on tonight's consent agenda. This has gone back and forth. The county needed to make some revisions after our board had approved it. This has now been approved by the county after our board to approve for use of the gym and the adjacent field, not the weight room. And then we would start mulling the field on August 1st. We felt that mutually felt that since it took a little while to get it done, we couldn't use it during the 2425 school year, that the county would continue to mull it through July 31st. We would take over on August 1st when our sports and those teams that may want to use those fields would be using them. So we would take over at that point. Just wanted to point those couple of things out and glad that we were able to come to agree with our.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Grandview Family Worship, Wisconsin Motorsports, Richland County Campus Foundation, Richland Hospital for their generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdna. Discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. On to action items under the revised agenda, general fund balance designation.
Okay, so each year, for the past several years, the district has picked up a portion of our employees' HRA deductible. The past couple of years, we've had a $4,000 family deductible. The district has picked up the last $2,000 for 2526. The family deductible is $5,000. The district is going to continue to pick up the last $2,000. And so in order to make sure that that money is designated specifically for those deductibles, the board each year commits that money into committed fund balance. And so you'll see historically, the money that has been spent. We have, over the last five or six years, committed $60,000, which means that that money cannot be spent for any other purposes unless the board specifically and explicitly makes a motion to do otherwise with it. But $60,000 has been a good number for us. You'll see that we're our projected 2425, this number, final numbers are not in yet. It's approaching $60,000, but we have not exceeded $60,000 in the end of the last six years, nor do we expect to this year. If we would happen to go over a little bit, there's nothing that says we want to honor that, but I do believe that $60,000 is a good number for the board to commit. That historically has been a very good number for us, and it doesn't doesn't lock up any more than we have to to bear other bills at times when cash flow might be a little short. So that's the recommendation for today. If you're looking for more information on different fund balance, it is in policy 6235. But this would be regarding six committed fund balance for the 2526 school year, specifically as it relates to those HRA deductibles. Any questions? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the June 30th, 2025 committed fund balance designation to include a total of $60,000 for future HRA obligations?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Sharp. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxel. Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 On to, under the revised agenda, 202526 student handbook revisions.
Yeah, okay, so this was also revised, as Mr. Remyhan just said. Niola recently came out with their annual updates on things that need to be for notice requirements, student handbooks, employee handbooks, et cetera. This is one of those things. There are some compliance things, things that we found that we were missing in our student handbooks, non-discrimination statements, FERPA notification, Section 504, child fine notice, asbestos, and protection of pupil rights amendments. These are all compliance things. They're in our our policies, they're part of law. We just have to have them included in our in our student handbooks as well. So that's what this agenda's topic is. Questions, anyone? Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve revisions to the 202526 student handbooks as presented? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Sharp. Discussion? Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. On to information discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so you'll see in our 2526 vacancies, we have a couple of openings yet. Both of them are for our alternative education teachers, one at the intermediate school, one at the high school. We believe we have the high school that will be filled with the assistance of CISA. I spoke with them this week, so that one should be worked out through our CISA. And then we do have some applicants for the intermediate school, but I put that interview on pause until our new principal starts on July 1, and then they will be able to conduct those interviews as as they deem fit. And then lastly, the very last line in that, you'll see a new position that is is open at this point, or will be open in the near future. That's our Director of Maintenance and Operations, Brian Jones, will be retiring this fall at the conclusion of the primary school referendum projects. And so when our HR director gets back from vacation early next week, we will get that posted. But Brian Jones has spent 47 years with the district, so he'll be leaving us this fall. Any questions from the board on any of the vacancies or appointments that we have at this point?
RCHS student handbook revision, personal communication devices.
Okay, so this was an item that went to a couple of our committees, our curriculum committee and our policy committee, I believe, at our last committee meetings. This is here for information only. This is an opportunity for the board to hear more about this, as a board as a whole, also for our public to make sure that they're aware of it, and then an opportunity to weigh in with the intention that this would come back to the board for a vote at the July 16th meeting. And so what we have found specifically at the high school, because the other two buildings have a cell phone ban from the start of classes in the morning to the evening, research shows pretty significantly that when students don't have access to their cell phones or their personal electronic devices during the school day, four things happen. There is an improved academic achievement, okay, significant academic achievements that happen, that students have a lower anxiety and depression rates when they don't have access to their phones during the day, that it reduces bullying, okay, and then it actually improves emergency situations. One of the things that people have said, when we don't have communication devices, what happens in an emergency? Well, actually, research shows that it actually helps in emergency situations because it doesn't clog up the towers, it doesn't clog up traffic patterns, it doesn't clog up the ability for a school to handle those emergency situations. So that's really the why behind it. I'm going to turn it over to our high school administration, see if they have anything else to add that I might have missed at a high level. Mr. Lemke and Mrs. Perkins, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Board. So this was presented to committees last week, so the full board was able to hear it through their separate committees. But a couple of things since that had happened, obviously, the documents in board docs are our current policies in red, and then our proposed, not policy language, would be in blue in there. But we have sent out a email to all parents of our students yesterday, and we received some feedback since we sent that out. Five parents have sent responses in favor of of the change in language, and two have sent questions or concerns with with change back to us. Our staff was notified of it on the last contract day, which was June 3, of the possibility of change next year. They were in support of it. We were actually able to speak to student council today about it and let our student council know about the possibility of change this morning, and they had some good questions as well. There is a school district in our community that's not part of the district that they reached out to us and said they would likely go to a very similar change if adopted by the board as well. Districts across the state, including a neighboring district, pretty recently went to this. I think there's five states with a bell-to-bell cell phone ban in the country, with the latest being within the last 24 hours, the governor of Texas just passed a bill, a state law, saying starting in 2526, it's law that students cannot have their phone from the first bell to last bell. We believe, as Mr. Board mentioned, this this could eliminate cyber bullying almost completely in the building. It's not a it's not a massive issue in the building right now, but it is it is a big enough issue that, you know, it does affect students negatively, so we would love to take care of that if at all possible. Students, one thing in the message to the parents, with students who still be able to access, getting a hold of their parents throughout the school, that each student is provided by the district with a Chromebook in our building. Those Chromebooks come with a student email assigned to them, so they can get a hold of their parents via email throughout the school day. And so sending an email, I forgot, my textbook for math, can you drop it off before 2:00? Sure. Okay, those conversations can still happen, as well as we have phones in every classroom, a landline phone in every classroom, as well as ones specifically for students to use in the front office, so they can come down at any point in time if they need to make a phone call home. We have that available. Students would be asked to house their phones in their lockers or their vehicles. The ask would be they're turned off, right, and not accessed at all throughout the day. They would not be able to carry them on their person or in their purse, wherever class class had needed to remain in their locker or vehicle throughout the day. Ultimately, this is not a punishment. If if the research that Mr. Board shows that this was, if cell phones were great for students, we would encourage our students to have cell phones, but the research is showing the exact opposite, actually. So it's all about student success for us, and Mrs. Perkins and I will do what we can to encourage student success at every turn, and this is no different. So that's that's the proposal that we'll be voting on on the 16th.
Yeah, so as Mr. Lemke said, this this will be coming back. It has been at a couple of committees. But what questions does the board have this evening that either I can answer or one of our administrators regarding this? Okay, if you do have any questions that come up, if you hear from parents, shoot them my way and we'll get them answered. Bring those questions at the next board meeting and make sure that everybody gets the answers to those questions. If they're a general question, if they're very personal or specific in nature, we'll obviously just address that individually. But we welcome, you know, feedback from people and want to know things that we may not be thinking of. But as as Mr. Lemke and I said earlier, this is based on good research, showing that there are some significant benefits to students not having a cell phone on their 24/7, mostly around the social media part of it. They have VPNs and access to these things that we can't limit even with our with our internet filters and things like that. So, okay, thank you.
RCHS student handbook revision, ECCP weighted courses.
Okay, so similarly, this is here for information only. This has gone to committee as well. Curriculum for sure. Did it go to another committee?
Policy.
Policy as well? Okay, yes, thank you. So this will come back for for a full vote at the July 16th meeting. This language centers more around AP courses and how weighted courses affect students' GPAs, okay? So one of the things that we see and have seen is the the arms race for the valedictorian and the gamesmanship that's played sometimes, and how they take more weighted courses and get access to different courses that are weighted to boost their GPA a little bit. So after doing some research and jumping through the committees, you can see the proposed changes there in green around AP testing or AP courses, stating that if you're going to take an AP course, the students must take the AP exam at the end of the year. And the AP course is only weighted if the student receives a two or more on that AP test, okay? They can get up to a five. So if the student works diligently and invests into that AP course and gets at least a two out of five on that AP test, then they can get credit for the weighted course and their GPA. And then some language around dual enrollment and ECCP, talking about how dual enrollment, if if a course is not taken with an RCHS instructor, then they're not weighted, okay? So you can't take a dual enrollment course with a non-RCHHS instructor and have it weighted. If we offer a comparable course, then the student receives a pass/fail grade. So if we have algebra in our in our school, they can't take algebra somewhere else and have it be weighted just to not just to have it be weighted, but it's taken on pass/fail. Again, you can read in green, but I'm going to turn over to Dr. Johnson, see if I missed any any high level things that you want to make sure that you point out here.
I think you hit on most of it. I think the important part to consider is that dual credit taught by our teachers, the work that we did this last year in aligning all of our curriculum really led us to some of these decisions, knowing that the pathway that students take, we want it to be an internal pathway. We don't want them to take courses from a teacher that we don't know and we don't know the rigor of the class from a different place, a different school, and bring it in here and take the place of like chemistry, let's say, and then we ask them to take physics after chemistry, and then the chemistry, the chemistry class they took didn't compare to them properly like the one we know ours would cover, all the things they need to cover. So that's part of this process. Something else that I wanted to make sure we brought up is that, there is one on it here. It's important that we know that the dual credit courses cannot count for core classes. They would just be elective. It would still count for graduation requirements, but that's another shift. But we really looked hard and long at a lot of the other school districts and what they do, and we were the only district that waited non-AP courses. And we decided that it wasn't because we couldn't guarantee the rigor, because you can get classes all over the country virtually, and so we wanted to ensure the rigor of our students. And when we waited, we know it's weighted.
This did go to, again, both the curriculum and the and the policy committee is for information, but either myself or Dr. Johnson or another administrator is certainly welcome in answering clarifying questions that the board may have regarding this.
I have a question about the AP courses. So what what you're proposing is that you will, if a student takes an AP course, they have to take the test. So who pays for the test?
If a student qualifies for a parameter due to lynch, the district pays for it.
Okay.
If they do not qualify, then they have to work. There are outlying situations that we would take care of internally if something should come up and that can't happen for them, even though they don't qualify, we would make sure that it was okay for them.
Was it discussed at all about the exposure component of the AP rigor and how important that is for all students regardless if they pass the test or take the test?
No, primarily from the the idea to not require tests, from what I've been told that happened before I was here, was to get more people to take those classes. And so we've been successful in that, and now the stigma has kind of gone, students know that the rigor is manageable, so students are more likely to take it.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know that I answered that question. We basically had that whole discussion about everyone being exposed to the rigor.
I just want to make sure every kid has access.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, if you have any that come up later or hear of any that you need answers to, please bring them to me. Don't call up personally or via email. We'll get them answered. We'll get them answered for a moment. Okay, thank you.
Board development, part two of four, board roles and responsibilities.
Okay, so this is the second of a four-part series, mini-series that we're doing here. You can't binge-watch it. You have to be here in person and partake in each one on a weekly basis. This is the second, so you've heard from our general legal counsel, Kirk Strain, talking more from a technical side of things on some board, school board traps and pitfalls at our last meeting. Our next two meetings, which is why we have moved them to Wednesday, we have three awesome individuals joining us from the Sun Prairie School District. Dr. Brad Sarin is the superintendent at Sun Prairie. Dr. Steve Trader is a board member at Sun Prairie, and Shandu Vamori, did I pronounce that correctly?
You did.
All right, is the executive assistant at Sun Prairie, and they're going to spend the next couple of board meetings with us, talking about board roles and responsibilities and how they can be effective and best practice. So with that, I will turn it over to the VIP folks in the audience. We're at the table. I guess you're not in the audience. Take it away.
We're no longer at the kids' age.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you. We're honored to be here with you.
It's your turn next. Yeah.
Thank you.
They do a pretty good job of picking up if it's just sitting in front of you.
Some great, thank you. So Brad, Shandu, and I created a company, actually just a couple of months ago, called the Evergreen Leadership Group, because we've been asked to come into various school districts to help them, really in three main areas. The first is the implementation of a governance model. Second is to help with strategic planning, and the third is to help them with board development and leadership development. But with that, we want to let you know that we aren't consultants, we're practitioners, and we're in the trenches every day, just like all of you, trying to move the needle for kiddos in our school district. If it's okay with you, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, is if we could, if you could just introduce yourself so we get a sense of who you are and what your role is, and it'd be really interesting for us to hear what you want to hear from us, whether, and we have a presentation, but what we'd rather do is just have a conversation. But in order to do that, we'd like to know what's on your mind, either from the seat of an administrator or the seat from the four board members who are here. Is that okay if we do that?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Steele? Would you, would you, would you mic start?
I'm Mrs. Steele. I am the creative assistant to Steve, and I just am excited to hear what you guys have to say about the board and the group, and welcome.
Thank you.
Amy Hardy, I'm the principal at our primary school, and I guess just on ways that we can continue to be stronger as a unit and have that cohesiveness and that understanding that what all of our roles are is continuing forward for us.
I'm Sherri Johnson. I'm the director of curriculum and instruction, and I'm excited to do some vision and mission work, focus what we're doing with that.
Shahn Joseph, special director. So welcome. I understand this is board development, but also as admins, I think this is important for us to be here and listening to you present as well. So I'm just so excited to hear what you have to share.
I'm John Bowsworth, I'm the business official. I'm just excited to hear you guys talk. I think that it's difficult for any board of trustees, no matter if it's school or any organization, to really separate themselves from operations and become visionary, and I'm just excited to hear some of those strategies.
I'm Brady Donald, a board member. As far as board governance, a lot of it, especially for new people, is what they can do, what they can't do, what limitations they are. Some people get the notion that when they become a board member, they can step in and run the district by themselves. Not quite true, so just little things like that.
Hi, I'm Jill Sharp, new board member, so I'm just here to soak it all in.
Hi, I'm Aaron Obiha, board president. We've worked very hard trying to get the board governance model on the board here in Richland Center to get out of that area of gray and make it more black and white, and hold one another accountable as well as ourselves accountable to what that board governance model means. So to get more insights from you guys is really much appreciated, and I'm really interested in the strategic planning part. That's something that, as a district and community stakeholders, that would be something huge for us to start adopting and working forward with. So thank you.
Steve Board, I'm the superintendent. Again, thank you for coming and welcome to Richland Center and our Richland Center High School. My goals are kind of twofold personally. I'm a very goal-oriented person, so again, I agree with Mr. Obiha, having a strategic plan and really having a clear vision for what our goals are to allocate resources, whether that's people, time, or money, I think is important. Also, I think that sometimes when local communities do things the same way for so long, they maybe fall out of best practices. And so having a sense of maybe what are some best practices for a board, a relatively young board, inexperienced-wise and age, that I think that would be very valuable for us. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Trexel. I'm a board member. I think for me, I've served on many boards in our community, but a lot of those are, as David alluded to, are a little more relaxed, and I really had to learn about this is a whole new type of rules and regulations, and I think, like all of us, we don't, we want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly and not overstepping or something like that. Sometimes, you know, the public looks to you for immediate answers, and sometimes that's very difficult in a small community. So I'm just anxious to learn just exactly the best practice to do that. Thank you.
Ryan Lempke, one of our co-principals, first in Center High School. I think I'm most excited to listen, feedback and visions of other individuals that have boots on the ground or in the trenches just like us, so I think that's what I'm most excited for.
Liz Perkins, co-principal, also at the Richland Center High School. I'm just excited to hear tonight ways in which we can all work together. It's been fascinating just to watch the board learn more, you know, protocols and policies, and we're learning that too along with them. It's not things you're automatically just taught in school, so just excited to hear things that we can all keep each other in check, make sure we're operating effectively.
I'm Laura Sogli, I'm the assistant principal at the high school, along with the seventh hall athletic and activities director. I think the piece that I'm interested to hear about is best practice and improvement on communication between administration, superintendent, principals, and our board, and appropriate how we can convey that to our staff as well.
I'm Shandu Vamori. I have been at the Sun Prairie School District almost 20 years as a member and 12 years in the superintendent's office, and work very closely with these two gentlemen who have always made me feel a member of the governance team. I'm super excited to be here. I did some reflection today. I've sat in about 1,008 board meetings, probably tens of thousands of agenda items, worked with 21 board members, which doesn't seem like a lot, we're 12 years. And it has just been an incredible journey from where we were in Sun Prairie, where we had items on our agenda like booster uniform donations, children replacements, high school concession design plans, which turned into a two-hour discussion on the direction of sewage flow. And it's a true story.
We never got an answer from them. Pretty sure close down.
In Sun Prairie, we also, in the last 12 years, built two elementary schools, a comprehensive high school, had one-third of a billion in referendum, dealt with mold, COVID, space planning, and a really large comprehensive secondary school reconfiguration. Our enrollment has gone from 7,300 from when I started to about 8,600 now, and our budget was 80 million at that first annual meeting I attended, and this last one was 162 million. So if you can imagine dealing with all of those issues, having alignment, especially in the position I sit, I am generally a board observer. I observe and attend as a silent observer to many board meetings, and the only time you usually hear me talk is when I do a roll call, expulsions, you name it, space planning. And it has been incredible to work with Brad and Steve and bringing a governance system to Sun Prairie. And one thing we never talked a lot about in those 12 years was kids and what our purpose is and what our job is as educators. And Brad and Steve will tell you a lot that we are all educators. The position I sit in, from our janitors all the way up to our superintendent, and there needs to be a lot of alignment in everything, from the boardroom to the classroom, and that's the need that they need for our students. And as Steve said, we're not perfect. We're on a journey just like you. We're just here to share our journey and what has worked for us, some of the pitfalls that we have faced. And so we generally like to start with that story, and then, did you want me to read AJ's quote first?
Why don't we, we'll just introduce her first quick?
Yeah, yeah. Perfect.
So thank you.
I'm Steve Trader. I served for 14 years on the Sun Prairie School District Board of Education. My day job is I work at the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, the Principal Association for the 2,600 principals in Wisconsin. And before that, I spent 17 years at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I was the dean of the undergraduate business program there. So it was a bit weird. I spent my days in higher ed and my nights in K-12, and I was recruited awesome about 10 years ago and haven't looked back. But as Shandu said, we're just honored to be here, and if you can learn from our mistakes, then we'll consider this a success, because we've made about every mistake in the book, and we'll get into that in a bit. Dr. Sarin.
Yeah, so to round out this team of people, and it's unique to have a superintendent, a board member, and an executive assistant that makes up and comprises what would be the governance team, and the relationships that we have with each other allows us to get through those tough times, those sticky times that we are all going to face when something viral happens and when we face a crisis or when we're trying to make a critical decision about how we're going to allocate scarce resources or any of those things. What gets you through all of it are relationships. And so it's one of the things that we try to do is begin to immediately sort of model what we believe are the healthy relationships necessary to get through some of those tough times that every school district in the state of Wisconsin is going to face. And so I'm Brad Sarin. This is my 18th year as a superintendent. I started in Casston, Wisconsin. I spent a decade in Casston, Wisconsin. At the time, I was the president of the Rural Schools Alliance, right when it was, you know, beginning to formulate. And then after that, I was in Chippewa Falls, and I was a superintendent in Chippewa Falls. And I just finished my 10th year in Sun Prairie as a superintendent, too. Just feel really fortunate to be asked to come here and to share some of our insights with you in order to help you along the way, as we're trying to figure it out along the way, too. So Steve's going to talk a little bit about our story and build off of what Shandu talked about.
He used to have hair before he came to Sun Prairie, too.
I did.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't white either.
Some period, and as are many districts in Dane County, it's a tough, it's a tough district to be a part of. There are lots of pressures. Not that you don't have some of the similar issues that we have, but being the largest suburb of Madison presents some unique challenges that we end up facing. But a little bit about our story, and I'll start 14 years ago, when I first got on the board. We had, we have a seven-member board, just like you, and all seven of us thought we were the superintendent and wanted to be the superintendent. And we had a superintendent who just wanted to do his job. So we had eight people sort of bumping into each other, not knowing who was responsible for what. And we were in the weeds, Shandu just gave you a list. We spent, how many hours did we talk about trash bag liners? 90 minutes? Like, you can't make this stuff up. Really, I know you'll find this hard to believe, I know nothing about trash bag liners, nor do I know anything about what it takes to run a school district. That's why we hire superintendents and they hire amazing staff members to do that. But Maya Angelou says, when you know better, you do better. And when we hired Brad Sarin 11 years ago, things changed for us. He talked to us about a governance model. We ended up implementing that model, and I think primarily because of that model, we have now passed, in the past nine years, we passed for a referendum, almost $300 million, which we're really proud of. That would not have happened without a governance model, without an understanding of what's the role of the board versus what's the role of the superintendent. When I say superintendent, I mean, boards really have one employee or should only have one employee, and that's the superintendent. Everybody else in the district theoretically reports up to the superintendent. So when I talk about superintendent, I'm talking about administration also in general. But we, it was like the Wild West in Sun Prairie. We were, and Shandu already said this, we were talking about everything except kids. We were talking about whether the facilities department should buy a Ford or a Chevy. And that's what we got into, because I've learned over time, it's hard to talk about the assessment of student learning. It's difficult. So we were talking about everything but. Once we got all of our ducks in a row, which literally took us years, and in some ways we're still doing that, we try to spend at least 50% of our meeting focused on student And if you saw some of, we're a district that's about 40% poverty, we're about 45%-ish student of color. If you saw, we have 50 languages spoken in our school district alone. If you saw some of our preliminary data around especially early childhood literacy and math at the elementary level, we're starting to see some good signs. It's taken us a while to figure all of that out, and it's taken the board in particular a while to figure out what is our role. Nobody gives you a handbook when you join the board, or at least they didn't in Sun Prairie, to say, this is what we do and this is how we do it. It's sort of this legacy model. Well, this is just the way that we've always done it, and it was not functional in Sun Prairie. I'm proud to tell you that the, well, not proud to tell you the first part, the average tenure for a superintendent in Wisconsin is about four years right now, four years. And two years ago, a third of all superintendents in Wisconsin were brand new. Of 420 some school districts, a third were brand new. We've had this guy now who is going to be starting his 11th year next week. Dr. Johnson, your counterpart, will be starting her 12th year. Our assistant superintendent of operations, we had one who was here for six years, but she moved up north. Nick's been with us now a couple of years. He was in another position before that. Long tenure for principals and directors in our buildings now. And we have over 90% retention rate of staff, which in Dane County is huge, because it's very easy to go from Sun Prairie to Wana Keet and DeForest to Verona, Middleton, Madison. And the fact that we're above 90% retention says something. And part of it is the reason that Shandu talked about. We now have alignment. The board knows what its role is, and we're trying to do that so Dr. Sarin can do his role. And it's the difference between leadership and management. The board leads, the board sets the vision, primarily hopefully based The board leads, the board sets the vision, primarily hopefully based on community input. We can talk about strategic planning and what we've done and what we do to help school But then it's the job of the superintendent and staff to manage the school district. And those are fundamental differences. But what happens is nobody, I shouldn't say nobody, few organizations, including our own state school board association, in my humble opinion, provide the tools needed for school board members to actually lead. And that's one of the things that we're passionate about, helping develop leadership skills for school board members. Because if you don't know, you don't know. And you just come in, and it's easy to get sucked into the weeds of things. We try not to do that, and I think we now have a track record of not doing that. You want to read this first?
Sure, sure.
And this is meant to be a conversation, so at any time, interrupt us. We've got a long, well, it's not that long.
It's only 30.
30 slides, but we're happy to get rid of that and just have a conversation.
So, "School systems exist to improve student outcomes. That is the only reason for which they exist. School systems do not exist to have great buildings, happy parents, have balanced budgets, have satisfied teachers, provide student lunches, provide employment in the county or city, or anything else. Those are all means, and incredibly important and valuable means at that, but none of them are the ends. None of them are why we have school systems. They are all inputs, not outcomes. None of those are measures of what students know or are able to do. School systems exist for one reason and one reason only: to improve student outcomes."
And A.J. Crowell just published a book that is called Governance on Their Behalf, and it's an excellent book. It's a quick read, too. We all read it. And so really encourage you to look to A.J. Crowell's book if you're interested in governance. And so, right now, it is harder to be a board member, and it's harder to be in any level of leadership in public schools than it has in a very, very long time. And so if we think about, just, and I know that people are going to crane their neck here, the people that are looking for reasons just to be angry, traditionally, we had sort of like people upset about either, you know, the beans, balls, and buses. It would be either be like school nutrition, or athletics, or transportation. But now, people are angry about the fiscal uncertainty and how we are allocating resources. There's a culture of outrage where people literally leverage specific items in order to attack the integrity of the school district, attack the integrity of school boards, attack the integrity of administrators, in order to sort of like increase their stature within the community. That's happening all over the state of Wisconsin and the nation. There's racial tension, there's political hype cycles, where it makes sense that politicians want to divide communities. It's how they advance over another person. When, if you ask people in this community, or really any community in the state of Wisconsin, about what they should be focused on regarding public schools and kids, they want to support kids. They want to unlock kids' potential. They want to support those students so they can reach their dreams. And when we end up falling into those political hype cycles versus keeping our eye on what's most important, which is supporting kids, we just get into dialogues that represent vision drift for a school district. You've got strong opinions strongly held, so people are just not willing to sit down and sort of talk through issues. You have record-high levels of mistrust in governmental institutions. Going back to the times of really like Nixon, thank you. And that's statistically proven that governmental institutions, and I can conclude any type of governmental institution, is really struggling in terms of how to gain trust in communities. From artificial intelligence to disinformation, all of that is creating this sort of like dizzying effect that's really hard for organizations to try to make sure that they're putting their number-one thing as their number-one thing. This is your favorite quote. Go ahead.
I do love this. Peter Drucker said, "Only three things happen naturally in organizations: friction, confusion, and underperformance. Everything else requires leadership."
And today, what this is about is how the leadership of the board, how the leadership of the superintendent, and how the leadership of the executive system aligns to try to create an environment where people can do amazing things together because of that alignment. So we share this slide an awful lot in our presentations, and we use it locally, too. And so in Sun Prairie, this is what organizations look like. Imagine that every single one of these arrows is like a different part of your organization. You might have a newly-elected board member that wants to go in one direction. You might have a booster club, maybe a wrestling booster club, that wants to go in a different direction. You've got a certain section of parents that really feel that this is really the direction that you should go, you should go. And then there's a new principal that comes in and feels like, "Well, this is the experience that I have. I'd like to go in this direction." And you've got people that are really just trying to survive the day, survive the week, survive the year, and put out the fire that's currently on their desk. And so they're tunnel vision. And what happens in that scenario is everybody in this confusing situation where you've got arrows pointed in a million different directions, think that they're the person in the middle, and everybody else is pointing in the wrong direction. And so everybody's got that sort of like personal siloed perspective of like, you know, "I'm just trying to survive." And the role of the board is really to go from a confusing organization like this to an organization that's aligned, where the board, just like Steve said, is setting the vision and purpose of that district, and the administrative team is falling behind it in order to create the strategies, the goals, and the metrics necessary to make progress toward that board mission and vision. However, if we are just spending all of our time talking about the easy things to talk about, which like Steve was saying, it could be a Ford or a Chevy, or like Shandu was saying, a trash bag liner, which are easier to talk about than student achievement, we're never actually getting to a point where we understand the destination that we're all working together to achieve. Now, once the board gives us that common direction, what is the job of the superintendent is to create that culture of alignment and tightness so everybody is rowing in the same direction. Otherwise, you will have, just like Steve read that quote, people going in sort of different directions in that way. All right. So this whole thing is about the board understanding that your leadership matters. We believe that your leadership matters. And so this is just scratching the surface about what board leadership is, but we also know that boards at points don't really realize the power that they have as a single unit of leadership, and that they get to write the ending of their story, especially when they're collaborating together. And so we've got this question, it's a future search question, and we want to like unpack this question. Imagine it's three years from now, and unlike most school districts in the state of Wisconsin, the board in the Richland School District is the most functioning and exceptional team that represents the most stability in the school district. That board is the most visionary. It's the most effective when it's thinking about its own performance. What does that look like? And so let's just pause for a second and just think about, like, what does that look like when the board's the best-functioning team in the district? What does that look like to you? And so we would just ask, like, when we ask that question, when we're searching for the future in terms of three years from now, what does that look like?
I'll break the silence. If the board is an exceptional team, they are, every one of us, every one of the board members would be able to answer a question about what direction are we heading the same way.
Yes, I always tell new board members or even people prior to being elected, you know, you're only one person of seven. You don't have any more powers, say, individually, as a board, we have to be, you know, combined, we are strong, but we have to be on the same page and everybody rowing at the same time for that to happen. Because if we don't, if you can't function as a board as a whole and remove yourself from, you know, my one voice is more powerful than yours, the board will never function. You know, and it's difficult because sometimes people think, "Well, we just got to agree on everything, right? Our opinion doesn't matter." You know, and those are hard conversations to have, but, you know, as people understand and align the tough conversations with the goals and outcomes, it becomes easier for the board as a whole to have one voice. So that's something we've been working very hard on the last couple of years. We've come a long ways. And just want to throw out there, too, like, I know how hard it is, Steve, you probably know how hard it is to get the board together for a retreat. We got to post everything and make it all right and proper and legal. Part of this whole thing is to educate all of us, myself included, because I'm no smarter or better than anybody else. So looking at down the road, three years, hopefully, this, what we're doing in this fourth-part series is helping the board understand our things, administration, staff, and not just the school district, but also the community, understand what a governance model is, what our roles and responsibilities are, because it'll take time, you know, three years down the road, if we continue doing these things in public. That's why we're doing it in public, because it's easier to do it in public than it is to try to do it at a retreat level. Hopefully, you know, everybody can get on board, and we're all rowing at the same time in one of that same direction.
Yeah, piggyback on what I understand. Even when we have disagreements at the board level, when you're out talking with public, you know, you're still representative of the board, and if the board decided that way, you know, you still have to represent that opinion. Even if you didn't support it, you're still there talking about it and seeing the benefit to it. You know, even though there is some stuff that you might not have agreed with, you're still there to support that decision.
Well, I think for me, it's the mutual trust and respect that we have for each other, and that even as Mr. Dobbin said, that sometimes we might not totally agree, but what we try to do is we try to come to a mutual agreement and figure out what's best for the students and the administration. But I think we've talked about it many times, is that we have to trust in our administration, and that's what we have to do. And I think we have tried really hard to do that. And as I've said, it is hard when you have all these different policies in place and all this technical stuff, that sometimes you want to just throw off the technical stuff and just, you know, get down to business. But I think we've tried very hard to listen to each other, and there's been times when, you know, education was not my wheelhouse, and so, but we've had other people that have been in the education field and prior board members. And so I've really tried to listen why they feel that way, and they've changed my mind on how I decide on things, because I see it through their eyes and why they feel the way we do. So, thanks.
So it's, because of the work that you've been doing, it's obvious that you are not a stuck board. And we see a lot of stuck school districts across the state of Wisconsin. And so generally speaking, when we see a school district that is just sort of like stuck, and we look at, because the, I mean, the fish rots from the head down, and so when we look at like how is the board functioning in this stuck school district, you generally see school board members that have sort of like personal agendas. They've got operational focuses. There are, generally speaking, special interest groups that have sort of an angle at a board member, and a board member is voting according to a special interest group versus, like you were talking about, the good-for-the-whole district as a team. At times, because of those hype cycles that we were talking about before, you can have people that sort of fall into being worried about the crisis of the day and having that take up the agenda space and the white space in calendars instead of what is most important for our people, where there are unclear expectations, where there aren't maybe goals, we call them results policies, that we know that the administrative team is working toward because the board has clearly delineated those. When we see conversations where the basis of the conversation is really about assigning fault and assigning blame, you know that they're not in a solutions-oriented or future-focused type of discussion, and it's just not a healthy atmosphere. And you're going to see tenure rates of administrators and board members drop off the table and decrease just because it's not productive. When people are either acting as free agents, or they're focusing more on adult problems versus kid problems, those are all indicators that the board is an obstacle for that organization to make progress toward beginning to realize its mission and vision. So these things that I'm talking about also represent sort of like a from-to chart for districts to go from a state of maybe having one or maybe a mix of these things into a more ideal state, too. And so you talked about a governance model. Our experience is strongly that governance models are wonderful, but they also largely represent paper and PowerPoints, and they don't represent the relationships necessary to bring that model to life. And so what we like to hit on equally to having all of the paper and all the PowerPoints, which are necessary, but the mindset on the governance team in order to change the trajectory of the organization. And so when you're thinking about, how do we change the trajectory of the organization and do it together, it's really about intentional community linkages. Like Steve said, connecting into, what does this community expect so the board is better positioned to govern on behalf of it? And how can the board take those community expectations and translate those into organizational goals, outcomes, that then the board is going to empower the administrative team to develop strategies necessary to make progress toward those? And so what the community expects, what the board is governing toward and on behalf of, and what the administrative team is working on, all have this logical line of sight. That takes years, and we're still working on it. And also, like Shandu and Steve have said, that alignment has allowed us to do a couple of things that I think are really great for the kids and families of the Sun Prairie School District. And our experience also is in communities where we've been able to work with them to create that alignment between what the community expects, what the board is governing toward, and what the administrative team is working on through strategy development, so you can better be able to be positioned to show that the community of what you're working on has a return on investment of tax dollars of what the community expects is a really unique positionality for the Board of Education. And it starts with the board. That they're grounded in policy, that they're purpose and mission-driven, that they're future-focused, solutions-oriented, results-based, empowered as a governance team and student-centered. And so when school districts have those elements, they just have a more robust set of like norms and agreements to withstand all of those emotions that come up from all of those other things that we talked about, like the crises of the day and all of the resource allocation, and the politicians that are looking to constantly divide communities, and all of those other things. When we have those things, we're just more robust, and we can withstand that rollercoaster of other stuff that we cope with. All right, so like, let's just stop again, because that was just a lot. We just talked about a lot. What's coming up for you? What is that, what is, when we talk about those things, how are you processing those things? What meaning are you drawing from some of those ideas?
Governance team is something that we haven't done or started yet. I think it's really important for us to start getting more in the trenches on that. I mean, we talk about things, we help one another, we do onboarding and such, which is great. We remind each other, hold people accountable. But some of that stuff is more reaction-based versus being proactive, so the governance team is interesting. It sounds very interesting.
So when we talk governance team, Steve is the, Steve started this, really. So our governance team is made up of our seven board members, Brad and his two assistant superintendents and myself. So we're the governance team, and obviously the remainder of the So we're the governance team, and obviously the remainder of the administrative team does, but that, that has the idea of being a team and caring for each other and being all about the relationships, because as Brad said, none of the policies work, holding each other accountable, getting through all the things we did would not have happened without the trust in each other, and so relationship building is super important. And, yeah, and respecting each other for the work that each of us does.
We, we didn't say, we have five student school board members as well, but they're not part of the governance for, for, for obvious reasons. They, they're at all of our meetings, they're not in closed or executive sessions, and they don't vote, but they sit at the board table with us, which has been really great. And Erin, I want to come back to something that you had said earlier, I think doing this, the development you're doing in person makes a lot of sense. We also do two full day retreats a year of just the governance team. I say just the governance team, it is a posted meeting, so anybody can, can come and observe should they want, but the 11 of us get together twice a year for full days. We did it in January on a Saturday, which isn't necessarily ideal, but it's, it was the only time we could find, and we have breakfast together, we talk about goal setting, we talk about what are, what are the goals of the board, separate from district goals, but as a board, what are the goals that we have? We develop those, we have lunch together, and there's something that happens when you eat together, right, and you, you talk about your family, it's hard to have a lot of animosity. Well, sometimes it's not, I guess it's hard. It can be hard to have a lot of animosity toward one another when you're spending all day together, talking through goal setting and, and also trying to have a little bit of fun. It's okay for a board to try to have, have some fun, and we, we try to, try to do that, but the, the all day retreats for us, can't speak for your board, but they've been very successful in helping build that camaraderie, build the trust. At the end of the day, Brad and Shandu have said this, and we'll keep talking about it, this is all about relationships, and you all know that. Education's all about relationships. But if the board, and I, the, the board should not always agree on everything. Thomas Jefferson once said, if there's a roomful of men, and it was men at the time, and everyone's in agreement, someone's not thinking. So the goal for us is never to have a seven to zero vote, if that happens, that's great. But it's okay to have a five to two or, or, or a, how good is my math, four to three vote, that's okay. But it is important, if I'm on the minority, I support my board, what the majority of that board said, so we get into vigorous debates, but we can, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and that happens because we have trust built with, with one another at the board, but also toward our superintendent and the administrative team. But at the, the one thing I want to say is, we, we've talked about being connected to the community, and for the four of you and your two other colleagues, soon you'll have, have your seventh board member in place, I think your number one job is to, to connect with your community. You're their trustee. It's not feasible to have thousands of people get together and make these types of decisions. So they elect you to be their voice around this table, but if you don't know what they're thinking, and if you don't know what they want, and if you don't know what their vision is for the school district, because they're the ones who are writing the checks in December to fund this entire operation, it all, to us, it all comes back to the community. It all comes back to figuring out what is it that they want, and then you're the, their voices at this table. And put it in a very simplistic way, to us, the board decides where you're going for spring break. You're deciding where this district's going. The superintendent, and in your case, his team decides how you're going to get there. Which of the four DPI curriculum are you going to use for, for elementary literacy, for example? That, that's a decision that administrators and faculty make. Board members, and, and in Sun Prairie, we don't even vote on those, those decisions, they're huge decisions, but we don't even vote on them, and I'm, I'm getting in, into the weeds, and we can come back to this, but we don't have any committees in our school district any longer. If we have a committee or a task force, it's to do board work, not superintendent, board's work, right? If he wants to set up a committee, that's great, he has every right to do that, but we don't have an operational committee, we don't have a curriculum committee, we used to. Can I just tell my story real quick? So, so we would. So we would, I, I sat on the curriculum committee for about four years, and they would bring a stack of textbooks, and they'd pass it around the table, and literally I'd take the seventh grade geography textbook, and I would, yeah, this looks great to me. But, I mean, that's what it was, I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, our, our administrators and our faculty should be making textbook decisions, not school board members who know, for the most part, know nothing about this, and even as a teacher, you know your subject area, but you don't know, probably, I'm, I'm picking on you, but you don't necessarily know that the other subject areas. And so it's to us, it's a waste of time to put boards in a, in a decision making capacity when they know nothing about the decisions that they're making. Boards, in our opinion, should be again, focused on the future, setting policies for what you expect, that's really what your community expects, as Brad said, and then the key part of this that we'll get into is that board members, how do you hold the system through the superintendent accountable for the results? And it really isn't any more difficult than that. Now, there are policies that can get murky as you're writing all of this stuff, but it really does come down to the board connecting with its community to figure out what direction do you want the school district to go? We believe the best way to do that is through a strategic planning process that gets updated every five years, because your communities change, school districts change. So you get that information as a board, you then pass the baton on to Steve. Steve now knows the direction that you've all told him to go, and it was his job to get you there, but you're holding him and the system accountable for results. Does that make sense? And that's when we talk about alignment, that's the alignment. That's the alignment from the, the, what Brad called the living room of your community members to the boardroom to the classroom. So everybody knows the direction that the Greatland Center School District is going. Sorry for, for going off on that.
Forgot the one thing. Person who makes the.
No, you're fine, I actually have a question on it. So as a board, we have made decisions where, for hiring, for example, unless it's something that we have to do, like administrators and stuff, all of the rest of that goes to consent agenda, like we don't even, we don't even approve that stuff in closed anymore. We've been slowly whittling away at some of the past practices and our best use of our time in trusting our administration to do what's best for the district, and you can, you know, there's been talks about how, how do we get rid of committees, because some districts don't have them, or boards don't have them, you know? I would be more interested, not tonight, obviously, even the next meeting, but I would be very interested in hearing how we can absolve some of those committees and probably replace them with more value added meetings, like governance teams or strategic planning, things of that sort, versus taking up time, you know, at committee levels and at board meetings doing all these other things. So I'm very interested in learning more about that, because we've talked about it, but we don't know where to start on, how, how do we get there, you know? So that's why we are doing this, you know, having this open and such, to learn more and so.
And Erin, we're, we're happy to talk about that, just a couple of quick points. Thank you for bringing up the, the hiring piece, because that is, we used to have a board member on all administrative hiring committees. We don't serve on any of those anymore. We have, because we have, only have one employee. So the only hiring committee that the board deals with now is should we have a vacancy in our superintendent? So directors, principals, teachers, we're not involved in any of that, that comes to the board through consent, because the state of Wisconsin requires board members, as you all know, to vote on those decisions, but it doesn't require board members to be involved in that process. And so we, and that's where the trust comes in. We're trusting him to ultimately have the final say on the 1,300 employees in, in, in our school district. And, and for, for that, it's, it's worked pretty well, but yeah, we'd love to talk about the committees. In terms of the governance, we have, we basically save every Monday of, of the year, because chances are pretty good that we have a meeting on a Monday night. We have two regular meetings a month, and then we have a governance meeting every month. And it's a two hour meeting, it's from six to eight, and it's to talk, and it's the governance team again, those 11 members of that team, anybody can come, but it is to talk about governance issues. We're in the process of revising some of our policies, so we've done a lot of that policy revision in our governance meeting. But that's how we stay true to our model, is mostly because of that governance meeting. Also, briefly, very quickly tell you that we also, as an officer position, we have a governance officer. Usually, that's the chair or the president, but having done that role, it's too hard to try to run a meeting and be the governance officer during the meeting, so we have somebody who, one of our seven elected board members serves as the governance officer for that year and takes the lead on the governance related matters, and that's worked really, really well for us. But again, happy to talk about any of those committees later tonight or, or next time. Shandu, you're going to say something?
Oh, no, I was just going to talk about, when you were talking about who makes the decision.
Yeah, of course.
So the person who makes the decision is responsible for it, right? So when you delegate those decisions to your administrative team, you can hold them accountable, but if you're making the decision, you know, it makes that a little bit harder. So, you know, that's one way we have, our team has, our board has been willing to give up some of that decision making, because they're going to hold Brad and his team, our team accountable for the decisions that he makes.
So let's ground that in an example. So let's say that the, that the board says, we are really passionate about literacy, and so we want, one of the overall goals of this district is to monitor and advance literacy in this district, and so that's great, the board's got an expectation, the administrative team is going to then build out a set of high confidence strategies necessary to make progress toward that board, that board goal. As soon as the administrative team comes to the board and says, like, listen, we've got two choices here for literacy strategies, and we want the board to approve it, well, guess who is responsible for that decision right away? It's not the administrative team, it's the board. And so it just confuses accountability at that point, and so, and, and that's what that is, the person that makes the decision is accountable for the results. So when the board has a balcony view and is saying, we expect, we expect to monitor for continuous improvement in literacy rates. Steve, we want you and your team to develop the high confidence strategies necessary to make progress in those. We'd like to hear about your baseline at the beginning of the year from, we're using A M W, just like everybody else, we'd like to understand your goal, and then come back to us in the winter and help us understand, did you meet benchmark? Tell us about your S G Ps, like, well, you know, so, so then that is the discussion that represents not only a, a board expectation, but administrative goal setting, the implementation of strategy, and then the board monitoring of that progress over the course of a year, rather than operational decisions that really don't have anything to do with the progress of student achievement. Does that make sense?
Can I just add, add on to that? It's, we see many school districts between the superintendent and the board play the game of hot potato, where the superintendent's more than happy to pass the decision to the board.
There you go.
And, and we, we saw it during COVID a, a lot, where I can tell you, our, our school board did not take one vote, one COVID related vote.
I, I wanted them to, they wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't want to make a decision about masking, again, remember, we're in Dane County, so it was a little different there, but he didn't want to make decisions on, I mean, he did, I'm being sarcastic, around masking, virtual, right, through Zoom, what, how do we do that? Staff coming back into the building, staff not coming to the buildings. Many superintendents around the state wanted nothing more than their board to make that decision. We didn't. Why? Because it was, it's operational in nature, and we have policies that say the day to day management of the school district is the job of the superintendent, not the job of the school board.
It was actually harder, because the board then looked at me and said, you know our vision, you know our mission, you know our expectations as far as our commitments and values of the district, we want an update every single board meeting, don't mess this up, but you're making the decisions. That was way harder, because I knew I was accountable for every single decision that was made during that time, and I really say not just me, the team. So it was actually, it was actually more difficult in that case, and so the board was positioned of like holding the administrative team accountable for making decisions that were aligned to the mission and vision of the school district in an unprecedented time.
The board also did not cave to public pressure when you had about half the people disagree with, with the decision that Brad and his team made. And I can, there's a school district, one of our neighbors, I won't mention the district before us, that. Time to, during COVID, they use a policy governance model. But they, they do a policy governance model, but their board got so much public pressure that the board ended up making the decisions. They took the decision making ability back from the superintendent. Why a board would ever want to do that, I, I'm not sure, but there was so much pressure that, that districts were facing. I know you all, you all worked too. Dane County's an interesting place, as I already alluded to, certainly during COVID, definitely was. But that's just an example of the board held firm. And what happens is, and I don't mean this about COVID, but it also means that as board members, you have to have a bit of humility, you have to understand that there are some decisions that your superintendent's going to make that you may not agree with, but at the end of the day, you have to understand it's not your decision to make. If you want it to be your decision to make, you, you control the throttle point, as, as Brad always says, you can take that decision back, but if it's, if you're delegating that decision to your superintendent, and then Steve is delegating it to, to, to the team around the table, then you have to be okay with that decision, even if you don't personally agree with it. And that can sometimes be, be difficult for, for board members to ground.
Why don't we just go right into this?
Yes. How much time do we have?
Why don't we do this?
We may be spending the night. We didn't bring the art. So, like, should, should we go till maybe nine o'clock, and then, and then we can, is that fair? Oh, this is a mo, a model that Stile and Bishop came up with that we really like. It's all about board effectiveness, and the first thing they talk about, they don't talk about board effectiveness with this model, we've taken this model and, and applied it to board effectiveness. Boards are very good at, at pointing the finger to the system about what's wrong. They're not nearly as good as pointing the finger in to themselves first and talking about what are, how are we functioning as an individual board member and as a board and as an entity? And so we think the first step is for boards to look in the mirror and figure out what's going well with how you operate as a board, and what's maybe not going as well as you would like. The second step then is you're looking out the window to figure out what's our vision. And we can come back here, and you've already alluded to this, the, the vision for the district, understanding that everybody around this table, all of your staff members and the community members who are paying attention, understand the direction that this school district is, is going, at least over the next five years or so. And then they use the model of the sliding glass door, that's where the board members come in, and this is where your, your real authority comes in. This is where your, your real authority comes in, is that holding the system accountable for the results that you expect to see. But again, they're really the results that the community expects to see. And so it starts, starts with looking in the mirror, then we look out the window, then we open that sliding glass door. What did I miss on that?
I don't think anything. I think, I think this represents that, that fundamental change of when we talk about the power of the board and where to start on this journey, that first step is for the board to look in the mirror first. And that is a step that is courageous and a little bit vulnerable because that is not as common. It is common for boards, like Steve was saying, to think that the process of system improvement begins with pointing the finger rather than looking in the mirror. And so that's like one of the, one of the core theories of actions that we would advance and that has worked for us, especially even as we talk right now, that Sun Prairie School District has had 11 different board members in the past six months. And so those governance meetings that Steve and Shonda were talking about for us are really onboarding meetings. The last Mondays, just this last, you know, just two days ago, we talked about board communications almost the entire two hours of the board governance meeting to better understand how to not step on each other's toes and how to make sure that I had clear expectations of what the board wanted as a whole, not individual board members, but what the board wanted as a whole in terms of communication and to what degree of communication they wanted. So that way, the, the current board really felt comfortable and trusting in the, in the instances where they knew I would communicate because I better understood the clarity of your expectations. And so let's stop here. Let's talk a little bit.
Can I just add one quick thing? Just with board effectiveness. Brad already talked about the governance meetings. Two other practical ways we do this. One, we evaluate ourselves at the end of every board meeting. The third way we do it is we do an annual self-evaluation where all of you administrators, including the superintendent, are giving direct feedback to the board on how we operate. Now, that takes a certain element of psychological safety to, to, to be able to do that. But again, the relational component, trust, relationships. If you have that, you're, you're willing to, as Kim Scott says, one of my favorite books on feedback, you're, you're willing to be radically candid with, with, with each other and to create that culture of feedback. And most boards are not, they're willing to give feedback. They're not nearly willing as willing to receive the feedback. And this is all about having a continuous improvement mindset. And if the board isn't modeling that for the system, how can Mrs. Hardy go into Mrs. Smith's class and give her feedback on being, on being a teacher if the board isn't willing to take feedback themselves? Sorry.
No, it's okay.
No, and when Steve said they evaluate their meeting, we do a survey that our governance team collaboratively came, worked on. We send it out at the end of our regular board meeting. All members of the governance team have the ability to respond to it, and then we share it publicly at our next meeting. So the public actually sees, it means an anonymously filled survey, but they see how people responded to the questions on how the board, how they felt the board dealt with the issues. So, yeah.
What kind of questions are on that survey?
Give me a second to look at the survey, and I'm happy to share it. But do you think that all board members complied with our governance policies? Do you think the agenda was managed well?
And was it student-focused enough?
Yes.
Because again, our goal is to have at least 50% of every meeting focused on students. And, and I'm not talking about things, because we just did handbooks too. We're not really talking, talking even about handbooks. We're talking about student results, whether those are academic results, whether that's social and emotional learning, whatever it is. But that, we try. No, it's not 50% necessarily every meeting. But the goal is at the end of the year that we spend half, at least half of our time talking about kids. And just Brad already said this, but when he started, he, he said, this system, the system of Sun Prairie had to have a major paradigm shift, and that was to stop focusing so much on adult problems and focusing on kid problems, which is why we exist. And that's why we started with that A.D. Crabbe Hill quote, because it is all about moving the needle, needle for, for kids. And in our system, especially our most marginalized population of children, who, frankly, in Sun Prairie, kids who look like my kids are doing pretty well. My wife's a teacher. We have the means to, to go to the library and, and help them in whatever way we can. But we've got a lot of kids, whether those are kids with special needs or kids who, who are free and reduced and kids who, English is not their first language, and are, are students of color, who are not doing nearly as well. And you all know, Wisconsin's number 50 out of 50 with having the largest opportunity gap in the country. And so that's one of the things that we are adamant about is the focus on children during our meetings.
So let's spend the last few minutes, just go ahead.
I was just going to ask you, what, what do you support and model do you round in, if there is one that you're rounding?
So we, so because the board has engaged with the community and has developed results policies that holds the system accountable to chief, we're able to develop a cascaded balanced scorecard. And we cascade that to every single one of our nine elementarys, three middle schools, and three high schools. For our first pillar, which our first strategic pillar has to do with, has to do with academics, we run a hundred-day cycle there. For the other pillars, which have to do with our focus on our staff, our focus on communicating and engaging, and then our focus on operations, we do at least once a semester rounding cycles in those, in those pillars. And so, and that also represents hundreds of mistakes and like, you know, 10 years of constant work, and we continue to look for areas where we can improve and all of that So why don't we stop? Give us a little bit of feedback. What do you want to double-click on and learn more about next time? What would you, just because we didn't get to that point, what would you just like to know about that we didn't cover? What are topics that would really meet your needs? And all of the questions that you delineated at the beginning that we should prepare to talk about the next time in the term?
How many of your 31 slides are left?
Well, we, so, and we love, we love not being able to like cover all of our slides, but we do have slides on the board's purpose, role, and responsibility. The idea that, that there are frameworks for governance that are research-based. We have, we run a model of governance called coherent governance. And then there are principles of governance that are timeless, no matter what governance model you're adhering to, and we would also cover some of those principles.
Something that interests me is you were talking about how the public is engaged with the board. I'm assuming there was a period of time where everything was bad, the skies falling, and there, I'm assuming there was probably a period of, it was like uneasily quiet. I'm assuming that a lot of the feedback you're getting from the public is probably really constructive and I guess how did, if it is, how, how did you build those relationships with the public as a board to solicit that kind of feedback where it's not just the skies falling constantly, but more and more constructive? We can give you some of those.
And just to foreshadow a bit, Aaron, it starts, it started with our strategic plan where we had 90 members of our community come together. We just got done with, with a school district that we worked with quite a bit smaller than your school district. And we were in their district 13 days, evenings, helping them. And it culminated in two community listening sessions where they had, and people are asked to come to both nights. We had 120, 120 people there, and the school board thought that they maybe get, maybe, maybe a dozen. So for us, it really starts with that strategic planning process that is not formed by people in this room. It's formed by people out there. Because again, it ultimately, it's their district. And then, and we'll, we'll talk about this next time, but it really is about when you have board members who get elected and they have their special projects that they want to see happen. If it's not in the strategic plan, then, then we're probably not going to do it. Because we had a board member who was really interested in, was it international?
Education.
International, yeah. And like, and that's great. There are 1,001 ideas. Education's not short of ideas in terms of how to increase the experience and better the experience for kids. But we could say, well, we, we didn't care about that in our strategic plan. So it may be a passion of yours, but the reality is it's not a passion of the community. And so that is able, what has allowed us to stay focused like a laser, to the extent that we can, on the future vision that again was set by the community. But we, we can talk about that more next time.
Other topics you're interested in?
What type of reports do you hear from building administration, board level?
Okay. And, and remind us, we, we've done a, we completely flipped how we run our board meetings. And we can talk more about that. But it used to be we'd be in a board meeting and the administration was talking 75% of the time. And it's a board meeting. It just sort of struck some of us that should the board be talking 75% of the time? So we now have our administrators record screencasts, and the board watches those videos on their own time, the flipped classroom model. And then they come in, the board comes in already having done the work, they're ready. And then we can start engaging in discussion. It's also made our meetings much shorter. But our, some of our screencasts, I'll tell you, could be 45 minutes. We want them to be 20 minutes or less. But we used to have administrators, no fault of their own, it's what we asked for, they would give an hour-long presentation before the board would even start debating or discussing. Now, all of that is done pre-recorded, but we can talk more, more about that if you have an interest in, in that next month.
We have the flipped classroom model here as well.
Okay, great.
Individual reports.
Yeah. Almost every report is, there's a summary report, and then there's, for almost everything, there's a video. It also has allowed us for the community who doesn't want to watch it live, and they're interested in one topic, they can go into Board Docs, which I know you use as well, and they can watch the one video presentation of the topic that, that they're interested in.
Ryan, were you asking what the content was specifically?
And we're happy to share some of that, some of our reports, the ring reports with you. Happy to do that.
They're all in Board Docs.
We talked about governance committees, so I made a note about that too.
I would like to see how we can engage the community more and get them more involved instead of having just, you know, instead of it being a hot topic like the mask issue and then everybody comes, but just on a regular basis and get their information firsthand, get our thoughts on it versus social media, because then immediately it turns negative. And I mean, for myself, I mean, this is my third year on the board, and I'm, I'm just really proud of the progress we've made in that short time, a lot of the changes that we've made. You know, that's under the direction of our, our administration and our board. And I, I, I think that that's just, you know, just positive positivity. And, but that would be one thing that I would really like to see is how do we get the community to listen in or come to the meetings, that type of thing, if that's possible.
Yeah, great.
You likely don't have social media in.
Not at all.
We'd like to take it away, actually.
To piggyback off of Mrs. Troxel's comments with the community, because you mentioned community engagement, the board members should be engaged in the community. Maybe some helpful tips on how they can find the balance between listening to, you know, Johnny at the coffee shop and engaging in things that are important for the school district, but yet not what kind of trash liners, you know, because I think one of the things I've seen board members not struggle with, but maybe it's a challenge, like they want to listen to the community, but yet if it's something that, that really should be directed. Have you talked to the, to the principals and how, maybe some guidance on how they can really direct them or direct the conversation back into what is helpful, you know, and part of the strategic plan as a whole?
Happy to.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Could I ask a little about charter governance and how you knew that and how does your, your team work with your charter governance?
So we, so our closest example for that is a Sun Prairie Community Schools model that is a private 501(c)(3) that has its own governance team. And so what we have is just a real clear memorandum of understanding between the organizations, and we follow that. And we had Shayna Lewis write the memorandum of understanding. And honestly, there's not a, a ton of overlap unless the MOU dictates it. All right, so between what questions came up here and just the things that I think are really important that we'd like to still continue to cover with you that we just didn't get to today, because we had great conversations, I think we've got enough content for next time too. And so we look forward to coming back and, and really just continuing the discussion about what does it mean for the board to provide the leadership necessary for the district to feel empowered to reach goals that the board is holding the system accountable to make progress toward? Like Steve said, which are really the community's goals too. And so we're grateful to be here and excited to come back to continue the discussion.
And I know we want to go, but in the spirit of feedback, is this what you were hoping for? Is this meeting, meeting your expectations? And, and if it's not, and you don't feel comfortable saying that here, would you please let either Aaron or Steve know so they can convey that feedback to us? Because at the end of the day, we want to meet your expectations of what your needs are. And so if this did not do that, if you would just let us know, and then we can come in and refine this for, for next month.
Sounds great.
That, thank you so much. We'll go forward to the next meeting. Making motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
One second.
Mr. Troxel, discussion. Aye.
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 Aye.